I call this meeting to order. This is the City of Riverbank Regular City Council and the Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meetings. This meeting is also being conducted pursuant to the Government Code Section 54953B for teleconferencing of meetings. As a result, this meeting includes a teleconference location where Mayor O'Brien will be participating by conference call. He is located at the Capitol Hilton Hotel in the Potomac Room 1001 16th Street Northwest, Washington DC. It is 6:00 PM Pacific Time and 9:00 PM Eastern Time, Tuesday, January 23rd, 2018. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us, and I am Vice Mayor Darlene Barbara Martinez, and I will be presiding over this evening's meeting. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let's bow our heads for a short word of prayer. Father God, we come to you tonight. Thank you for this privilege of being at a Riverbank City Council Meeting. Thank you for this small town. And Lord, we're asking God that you would give us special wisdom, that heavenly wisdom, because we know you can see the present, you can see into the future. So we're praying you'd give this wisdom council for every decision they have tonight. Help our city pull together with unity. We're praying, God, that you would give us a special blessing and let Riverbank be a city set on a hill that cannot be hidden. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz. Council Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Two Cindy Fossey, here. Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here. Before we proceed, I will ask Mayor O'Brien a few questions for the record. Mayor O'Brien, are you able to hear us?
Yes.
Can you confirm that the agenda was publicly posted at your location 72 hours prior to the meeting and is still posted at your location as required by the Brown Act?
Yes.
Is your location such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from if he or she wished to do so?
Yes.
Is any member of the City Council unable to clearly hear Mayor O'Brien? Does any member of the City Council have any questions or any reason to believe that we are not communicating with Mayor O'Brien? Let the record reflect that this council has no doubt that we are communicating with Mayor O'Brien. We shall now proceed with the agenda. Does any council member wish to make any changes to the agenda? I would like to announce that all public comments made on items listed on this agenda will be limited to five minutes per person, and each person may speak only once. Any council member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item is to be considered right now and to declare their conflict at this time. Item one, we have no presentations. Item two, public comments. No action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Do we have any public comment tonight?
Good evening, council, and Mayor O'Brien, who is in Washington DC. This afternoon, before 5:00, I did send an email to Annabelle with an attachment to be part of the agenda, but she says she can't talk to me about it, so I don't know if you have it. Do you have a copy of the letter that I forwarded to her today? I copied also, Sean.
I do not have a copy on me, no. What time did you send it?
Before 5:00.
Before 5:00?
Well, Annabelle wasn't here till 4:00, that's what she told me in her email.
Did you email?
I emailed it. You can check your email, anyway.
Do you have a copy with you?
Yes.
Yeah.
I hope you're not counting those for five minutes.
Yes, I am. Yeah, your five minutes is at the podium.
Okay, this is in regards to the Flavors dispensary, which is not in the agenda, so this is why this is in the public hearing. During the last meeting, I did mention about your application that is online for the cannabis, which included at page four, the rules of the announcing to the public. So, on January 2000, September 2017, I put this on record. It was in your record last time, where it says 300 feet from the perimeter of the project site. However, if the parcels fewer than 30, the radius for notice shall be increased until a minimum of 30 parcels or a maximum of 1,000 feet is attained. Well, I was online and just browsing through the Riverbank website, and on January 2018, there's a new wording to your future submittals. It says now, "City of Riverbank requires that all projects scheduled for public hearing," same wording, "include a list of the current property owners within 300 feet." So now they have taken away the, you know, minimum of 30 parcels. So my question to you is, and I don't know who can answer this, why was the wording changed? When was it changed? And by whose authority? Mr. White, who is your attorney, had told me at public hearing last time that it was just a template. Well, so it was just a template, and now you've changed it. So, again, I come tonight with strong disapproval of your passing of that ordinance with pacifism. Public has spoken, their opposition has not been really addressed. There is traffic issues, there are air issues, noise issues, and this is not good for the community where you have found or decided to put this location. So, in terms of the CEQA, your Director of Planning has said, "There's no change in the building." That's not the only criterion for exemption of CEQA. So, Mayor O'Brien had said at the last meeting, well, to the applicants, "If this does not work, and you will have no, you know, the road will really be impacted, then we'll find you a new location." Now, that was just such a shock to me, that the city will find a place for an applicant even before it's done. So this is going backwards. We have to do the traffic studies, like Richard Homer had mentioned. We have to take note of the safety of the neighborhood. I will say right now, that right, I've had an accident in that area, and there are children, active children, young children running around in that area. If there's going to be any accident or any incident, who do we call? Are you gonna listen to us? There's no good, you know, you're saying that the money that they're gonna pay is gonna pay for public infrastructure. But then I hear that it's really going to go to police. So, that is my opposition for the Flavors location. And I hope you understand that there are other ways that public can get to be heard. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Jennifer Miyakawa. I'm a resident of Riverbank in Crossroads. I spoke two weeks ago. I'm a mother of three teenagers, and I have a position as trustee in the Sylvan Union School District. I'm missing a portion of my own board meeting tonight in order to address you one more time. Two weeks ago, I came and spoke at the public hearing addressing some of my concerns about the proposed marijuana dispensaries. I listened to the concerns expressed by others, and I listened carefully to the rationale given by the City Council members. I appreciate and acknowledge the fact that this is an extremely difficult decision that no public servant wants to make. Having sat on a public board now for six years, I understand how uncomfortable that seat can be, when it seems you were left with a choice between bad and worse. See, that's three for three with me. Thank you. Having heard all that was said, my position remains unchanged. We spend so much time and effort educating our young people on how to avoid these harmful and highly addictive substances, and despite our best efforts, far too many become prey to curiosity or peer pressure or worse, poor parental examples, and easy access to a controlled substance. I can't tell you how many cases have come before me on the school board where the child has procured a controlled substance at home by a parent, an aunt, or uncle, or a sibling. You rationalize that legalizing it will force the bad guys out of business, those who could potentially taint the product, making it more deadly. But instead, you are making it mainstream, making it easier and more accessible for kids via their relatives and or friends. I don't foresee fewer cases coming across my proverbial desk. I see more, as it becomes an accepted part of my community. You have now made this harder for us to teach as educators and more challenging for me personally as a parent. To watch a young person get trapped by addiction initiated by curiosity, but specifically targeted by drug companies is heartbreaking. When we put the city's stamp of approval on businesses such as the one approved at the last meeting, dispensaries with the teen-targeted name of Flavors, we are inviting this gateway drug into our homes and communities, opening the front door instead of forcing them to sneak in through a back window. These companies specifically target vulnerable and impressionable youth, trapping them in addictions before their brains are fully formed and before they have had enough life experience to recognize the danger for what it is or the consequences that will follow. Let me share the statistics of a similar issue and how teens have been similarly targeted, quoting from an article in Science News for Students and Online Science Magazine for Educators, as well as a report put out by the U.S. Surgeon General in December of 2016. Quote, "Results of data from annual surveys sponsored by the FDA in the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention are astounding and concerning, in that although cigarette and cigar use has been falling over the past decade, there has been a dramatic increase in the use of e-cigarettes. In fact, this new survey showed that by 2014, e-cigarettes had become the most commonly-used tobacco product by middle and high school students. In one year alone, use of e-cigarettes by this population of kids had tripled. In the report, it also stated that within a four-year span, use of e-cigarettes among high school students increased by 900%. Why? Among the reasons for using e-cigarettes, teens and young adults commonly say they are curious. They see them on television, in celebrity photos, and in magazine ads. Cool superstars vaping on electronic cigarettes. Their high-tech gadgets seem to be available everywhere, from shopping malls to the 24-hour convenience mart. Is it any wonder that teens are being tempted to try out this vaping craze? Yet teens seem largely unaware of or unconcerned by the emerging data on these risks. One 16-year-old former e-cigarette user said, "I love trying flavors. I didn't know they could be addictive." As of 2014, there were an astonishing 7,764 unique flavor names for these solutions on sale, with that number growing at a rate of 240 a month. Why? To keep it fresh, new, relevant, and cool. Flavorings such as hot cinnamon candies, banana pudding, Dr. Pepper, and coffee bean, and those shown in the pictures that I will provide you afterwards, are only a small portion of the e-cigarette liquids now available. One vaping website promises that. This vape is so authentic to your favorite soda pop that you'll think you're sipping from a straw rather than from your e-cigarette. What does this have to do with the issue at hand? These companies target you through their marketing, and the potential for abuse and escalation to more dangerous substances is facilitated. In 2015, for instance, nearly 60% of high school students were both current smokers and current vapers. The Surgeon General's report notes that e-cigarettes are also used to smoke marijuana and possibly other illicit drugs. After having made tremendous progress in decreasing smoking rates, we may now be creating a new generation of nicotine addicts. This new trend, the FDA says, should raise alarm bells for parents and educators. We've seen the exact same marketing trend with marijuana. Blue Dream, Sour Diesel, Grand Daddy Purple, Green Crack, White Widow, to name a few. Don't tell me these aren't targeting people way younger than the legal age of 21. Do not kid yourselves into thinking that you are keeping kids safer by regulation and increased law enforcement. The argument, "If we can't beat 'em, join 'em, but watch them very closely," is not a viable strategy on this war for the health and well-being and potential future of our youth. With increase in supply and access comes increase in demand. In three years, you may decide that this isn't good for our town, but by then, you'll have a whole new level of drug demand, and the damage will be done. I urge you to reconsider your position on allowing any further recreational-use facilities in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? If there's no other public comment, we'll go on to our consent calendar. Item 3. A. Mayor O'Brien, is there anyone at your location wishing to make a comment on the consent calendar? Does any member of the public here wish to comment on the consent calendar? Does any council member wish to make a comment on or a motion for the approval?
I make a motion that we accept the consent calendar.
I'll second it. We have a first and a second to approve the item 3.1.
Motion made by Jones Cruz, second by Campbell, Council Authority Member Fossey. Yes. Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz. Yes. Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Can we hear it?
Mayor O'Brien, are you there?
We lost him. Yep, someone's phone's calling.
Looks like it dropped off. Let's maybe connect real quick here.
Can you recall?
Yeah. You're back on the, you're back on the conference line. Can you hear us now?
You have my personal phone.
Oh, I'll dial it.
That's fine. If it goes out, call the city cell. There is no one here. I kept getting the security error message, and when I hit it, it hung up.
That's okay. So...
Keep me on this one.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez is going to ask you about the consent calendar, and if there's anybody at your location that would like to make a comment.
Right, and according, no, there is no one here that would like to make a comment, neither do I.
Okay, so we've already have a motion, a first and a second, to approve item 3. A, and we were doing our roll call, and you were up next for your approval or no approval?
Yes. Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 4.1, second reading by title only and adoption of proposed ordinance number 2018-003, approving development agreement 02-2017 by and between the City of Riverbank and Family and Friends Association, Inc., doing business as Riverbank Cannabis Collective, a California corporation for commercial cannabis dispensary.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and good evening, council. As this is the second reading, the staff report remains unchanged with one, except for one notable change that council requested, which was that language be included in the development agreement, that the business be closed two hours before... two hours before and two hours after both the wine and cheese and Christmas parade events. We not associate specific dates in case those timeframes change, but it's been included in the language for the development agreement and the applicant has agreed to it at this time. Everything else remains unchanged.
Thank you. Does any council member want to have anything to say right now at this point? If not, we will open it up for public comment. There is a five-minute time limit. Mayor O'Brien, is there anyone at your location wishing to make a public comment?
There is not.
Is there anyone in this audience wishing to make a public comment?
Fred Wood, 3401 Sierra Street, Riverbank, California. Pastor of Riverbank Holiness Church, 3718 Patterson Road. And I came to the planning commission hearing and I just have some questions. After reviewing the slides and listening to what they said, I question the integrity of this business. One of them, in my opinion, was quite proud that she's been involved in this since 1995. If she wasn't willing to obey state law and federal law, why do we think she'll obey Riverbank city laws? I would question their integrity also. As a minister, they indicated, it was right in their slides, that the Jews use cannabis in their tabernacle and in their temple as part of the noning oil. I'm sorry they didn't do their research. There was three different spices and herbs that was used. And if they would have done their research, figured out what them words meant, none of them mean anything to do with hemp or cannabis. So I would question their integrity and that make me question everything about this entire agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment?
My name is Letitia Hidalgo. I'm a resident of Riverbank and have lived here for over 30 years. Just like the previous speakers, I think everybody has the same concerns about the regulations and just allowing marijuana into our small, small city where it will have a significant impact. Again, I ask you to consider the life of a person here in the city over that, the quality of life of the people here in the city over that of the potential income that it's going to bring in. There's other ways to bring in finances into the community. Show that you support the people here, the children here, the future of everybody, and, you know, that you have listened to the residents here who have been here week after week expressing their concerns and that they've also have been against the ordinance and the business coming into the community. So please reconsider and as our elective officials that you truly value what your people are saying here. You know, I'm sure you get tired of the same arguments week after week, but really your people here are speaking and we're not for it. And also, to those that would like to sign a referendum for the Flavors, please see me after. Thank you.
I still have serious concerns with the appeal because it was not done as per the code in the marijuana ordinance that the city passed. And that code states that it is to have a reason, to specify the grounds.
Evelyn, I'm sorry to interrupt, but even though I know who you are, could you say your name for the record?
My name is Evelyn Halbert and I've been a downtown resident for over 50 years. Okay, the code does specify that it states that it is supposed to specify the grounds. It did not. It's supposed to be accompanied by a nonrefundable filing fee, which it did not. I have not seen, I was told that it did not have the fee because it was taken out of the $20,000 that they paid. And the Section 1.11 that deals with that does not list that as a cost to come out of that fee. The appeal itself was written on a copy of a planning application, the same one they used to file their application. Last week, when this council voted, I believe there was conflict because there were two members, Councilmember Jones Cruz and Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez that have business interest and I think maybe property interest, I'm not sure with Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez, well within the 300 feet of that property. But there was no discussion of conflict of interest in voting. And since there was only three to vote and one of those voted no, I'm not sure it legally passed. But I do think the conflicts should have been at least discussed, revealed, or something because they do have an interest, both of them, very close to that, this business. The development agreement was not, the planning commission denied, was not appealed. So, an amended one was brought back for the council to vote on. And if you look at the state code for development agreements, if you amend a development agreement, it has to go back to the planning commission. That code is 65868. If it's amended or canceled, it has to go back to the planning commission and then back to the council. You didn't do that. You made changes in it, more than one change in this development agreement. They did not appeal the development agreement. So it's gone. Now you have another one that, I don't know if this is a totally new one or it looks like to me that it's one that you've amended several times. You changed the amount of money that was going to be paid by half. The signage is still an issue because it was never been discussed in the planning commission stage or this stage because it's not part of the development agreement like Flavors is. And I have been told that they can do whatever signers they want that's compatible with the Downtown Pacific Plan, which is not compatible with you guys have been telling us that you're not gonna live there. The floor plans, I asked for floor plans when I originally pulled the file. They were not there. I was given, or I was, in the packet that went to the planning commission and made the public show those two rooms as rooms. That's all they were labeled as. Even though there had been talk about other things going on, it just said rooms. I asked again. The city clerk provided me with a copy of the floor plan that she got directly from, because these floor plans are supposed to be out being approved. So she got me a copy of the floor plan from the company that was approving them. And the ones they're approving say therapy room on both of those. There's been no discussion in the development plans at all about therapy, extra activities, massages, anything like that. But that's what they're intended for. Now, when we came to the meeting, council meeting, the last time you did the first reading, you got the old one that said rooms. And that's what the public's been given. But that's not what it is because the ones that they're approving, the original filed ones, are therapy rooms. And there's been no chance for discussion from the public or the planning commission because they weren't even told. What's going on here is not what Flavors is doing. It's like you've got two separate double standards. And as far as CEQA, I do not believe that saying that because they are not extending the building out, it doesn't, CEQA doesn't cover under CEQA, or exempt from CEQA. You're charging a large amount of money per month for them to cover all of the impacts that they're gonna cause. I think that and the cell should be a reason for at least a study on the CEQA because remember downtown has never had any studies, any EIRs, nothing. But I would like some response to some of these concerns.
Annabelle Gammun, Riverbank, California. On the item 4.1, I have a couple of comments. I have asked for the copy of the appeal, which I guess Evelyn has, and proof of the payment. I just would like to say that it's really very shocking to me that we are coming here and all of you just look like your votes are already done. I hope not. Well, this is the second reading, so that's gonna be like a miracle. But this application is really questionable, just like Flavors is. I don't know your name, but you were sitting at one of the meetings that I listened to with the planning commission. What is your name?
So for members of the public that don't know me, I'm Nubia Goldstein, one of the attorneys with Churchwell White, who represents the city for city attorney services.
Yes. So, I watched this on television and it was in the planning commission. And you had mentioned that the planning commission had said no to the development agreement and also no to the conditional use permit. Ms. Denny, your planning chair, so you said, "Well, we can't go on to the conditional permit vote because the development agreement was not, didn't pass." You were overruled by staff and she said, "No, they have to vote on it because then they cannot appeal." So that process I'm looking into because I think you were correct, attorney. And I don't really know, I think your planning director was hoping to find a way for a fast appeal for this group. So then, I think that was December 19th, and I think they signed the appeal on, I said December the 20th. And at this time, we were trying to get correspondence with staff and your offices were closed or out of the office. So, I don't know when this was really recorded. Annabelle was in and out, so was it December 22nd when it was recorded? And I would really like to see that process, I think the public has the right to look at those forms. I'm having a hard time getting information. I will do my requests and they say under FC, CFCA, we have this amount of time. And then I get the letter from, an email from Annabelle saying, "Well, we have an extension and this is allowed." Come on, you know, these are important applications coming before us. We are the public. You are there to do the business for the good of the public. Do you understand that or don't you understand that? I really am very emotional about this because like you sit there, we're just like, "Hey, you know what? You can talk your head off, I have voted." Well, you know, this is not about marijuana legalization. This is about the locations that you have found for these dispensaries. It is inappropriate and we need to do more studies. Even on the processes, I think it can be questioned on whether it really is applicable or legal that it had passed. Do you really want us to spend the time for referendums and letting other people look into this, other lawyers? You need to understand, there's a conflict of interest here. I served in the planning commission for eight years in the county and we took ethics courses. And if you have business that has in any way increased your income for your business, you have a conflict. Tonight, it wasn't even read. Does any, well, you did say if there's any conflict. So, that was very good, Vice Mayor Martinez. So, that's my question, is I think the lawyer here was correct that the conditional use permit really had no chance to be voted on because the development agreement was already dismissed, was not approved. So basically, you just want this to go on. This is about money. This is about income coming to the city. Well, you know, if you listen to the letter that Mayor O'Brien wrote, he's right. You're gonna end up really not having it. You're gonna end up really jeopardizing the public, children in that neighborhood in Patterson and Oakdale. And maybe you don't have a conscience, did you even think? Did you even see the appeal? I don't think so. So read your pocket, because we are.
Is there anyone else for public comment?
Haskell Moore, resident of Riverbank. I thought this was gonna start at 6:30. I forgot to read the top of it, 6 o'clock. After January the 1st, a number of people went to ER at the hospital overdosed on marijuana or cannabis cream, who knows which it was, but it must have been new users because people that use it knows how much to use, I would think. So it's already taken hold on people, it shouldn't take a hold of because it's legal, I would think. You asked why no one has been coming last year to those meetings. When the Mayor O'Brien first spoke about marijuana being illegal January 1, 18, and he laughed, all of you laughed, said, "Oh, it never happened in Riverbank, we're not gonna do that." I come back about six, seven months later, just still laughing about saying it's never gonna happen. So I thought, you know, we'd like to see some good people there in the office. It ain't gonna happen, I don't have to keep an eye on this. And then bingo, I didn't notice it until November. My fault for not keeping up with it online. People should keep up on the internet of this council meeting that happens every two weeks to see what's going on and look for what's gonna happen and be on the agenda and just numbers not really explaining what it is. Thought I would point that out because at one time I didn't realize that. Back in 2011, I first started coming to these things. I spent three years in the back row back here learning how this place operated. I've got a few answers from a few people that work for the city, but not a whole lot. And I've been speaking to people across this nation. I was shocked. Did you know cannabis cream is out there illegally in other states in the south and northwest? I didn't know that, so I just happened to be talking to some people I know in the south. And... Wine and cheese, wine and cheese, I'm sorry, I've done reinforced this page already. Wine and cheese, celebration and Christmas parade. I don't think you should close it for those days at all. I think that the people marching by this cannabis center with it open really tells what we are in Riverbank. I don't think you should close it, or you're ashamed of it. You know, if you're gonna do it, do it out in the open. So, I think there should be a lot to stay open. Because I want people to see during the wine and cheese period what we really are here. Because it's so far against us. And wine and cheese is just limited, it's just limited to how much longer it's gonna survive. Anyway, you cut it down from about eight blocks to about two, it's really, charge so much for the spots that you've been out. No one's interested in coming no more. You lost a lot of vendors because you charged too much. So that's gonna be a thing to pass very soon anyway. And I wish you would have put item 6 right behind item 6. Should be 5, 5 should be 6. So don't nobody leave here until 6.1's been spoken about. That's very important. And you know, it's funny, Mr. O'Brien is in Washington right now, probably over this. And he could go to Washington before, that's a long ways to go when he could pick the phone up here and call Modesto and find out why this cannabis center, the people that's opening it were turned down in Modesto. I bet no one called, Riverbank mayor didn't think of calling Modesto mayor, huh? You know, it's so many things that you could find out if you would just try to find them out. So I'll call that my period for now. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment? Seeing that there is no other public comment, I bring it back to the city council. Are there any comments, questions, or a motion? No questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we pass. Item...
4.1.
4.1, associated... Four point one, as stated.
I'll second the motion.
We have a first and a second to approve item four point one. Roll call, please.
Motion made by Campbell, second by Jones Cruz, Fosse. Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien. Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item five point one, a resolution accepting the fiscal year 2016 dash seventeen annual AB sixteen hundred report of system development fee activity.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Our assistant city manager, this is a statutory requirement that we're required to do on a yearly basis, and our very talented assistant city manager is gonna step us through what this means, what it, what we have collected through the development that's occurred in Riverbank, and hopefully what we did plan to do with some of it.
So as the city manager mentioned, the California government code does require that the city present this report to the city council regarding the system development fee activity that has occurred during the fiscal year. System development fees are collected from new development to mitigate the impact that they will have on the city's infrastructure. And so the report before you presents the revenues that were collected during the fiscal year and the expenses made. You'll notice there was minimal revenue collected, although we did have new development. The new development that is on the east side has a deferred agreement with the city where they will be paying fees at a later date rather than upfront through the building permit process. And so those fees will like, most likely be coming in this current fiscal year. The fees that are, or the expenses made are all pursuant to our capital improvement program, which is presented to the city council in June or July of each year. And I'm available for any questions you may have.
Council, are there any questions? This is a public hearing? Are there any questions from the public? Comments? I close the public hearing. Mayor O'Brien, do you have, is there anyone at your location wishing to make a public comment?
There is not, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. We will bring it back to the city council. Are there any comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept item five point one as stated.
I second.
So we have a first and a second to approve item five point one. Roll call, please.
Motion made by Jones Cruz, second by Fosse, Councilmember Fosse. Yes. Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Chair, Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item six point one, a resolution imposing a moratorium of six months on the processing and issuance of additional permits for a cannabis dispensary within the city of Riverbank.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Our planning and building manager, Donna Kenny, will be giving this report. This item is being brought forward based on feedback received to staff by council at the last council meeting.
Good evening, council members. Mayor O'Brien. Again, this is an item, the cannabis dispensary moratorium. At the January ninth regular meeting, interest was expressed into having a moratorium after the two dispensaries have come through the process. So just for your knowledge and accounting, two cannabis dispensaries have come through the public hearing process. Two cannabis dispensaries were in process or are in process, and there are several business plans under review. The, the community had some concerns at our last meeting with commercial districts, or the location of dispensaries within commercial districts. They cited circulation impacts, possible parking impacts, and then impacts to families during events. So this moratorium is proposed temporary for six months. During that time, staff would be able to assess the community impacts of the first two dispensaries. Of the two that the city has in process, one has asked to be put on hold to see if the moratorium will be removed. One has withdrawn their application. And we will be accepting no new applications during a moratorium. So the recommendation is to approve this resolution imposing a moratorium of six months so that staff can accurately assess the impacts of the first two that were through the process, and to place another on hold, and to refrain from taking on any new applications specifically for dispensaries at this time. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions, council?
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
When we put a moratorium on, will we return any fees paid until such time that we lift the moratorium?
Yes, sir. The application that is being withdrawn will have staff hours deducted from it, and then the remainder of the deposit will be returned to them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This item is open for public comment. Mayor O'Brien, is there anyone at your location wishing to make a comment?
There is not.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make a public comment?
I'm Annabelle Gammon, Riverbank, California. I would propose that this be changed from six months to one year. I think with the two that are already in process, there might be some time needed to, given to this. For me, I still think that there are very many questions about the Flavors and the one that you just approved tonight. Serious issues. So I suggest that you can make the moratorium more than six months. I think you're gonna need it. Thank you.
Haskell Moore again from Riverbank. Did I just understand, you hear you say, show us that in six months, there's two more cannabis centers, and evidently it must have been the first two that applied, and one's withdrawn now because of this. The other was on hold for six months, and if you think everything's okay, then that was gonna be coming at us just like these two did? Of course, you can't answer that, huh? So how many of these are you gonna take on? The first time I came here, I asked Mayor O'Brien. I said, are you gonna shoot for four, and then you're gonna hope to get two? Damn, you know what? Those numbers are right, wouldn't they? Because you have two, and one of them, one of them has withdrawn, the other one's on hold for six months, and you got two here. Two and two makes four. I don't even know how I came up with that. I was told by somebody to look out for four. I can't remember who it was now, but, and I just started this since November, like I said. So I'm doing pretty darn good. This is a shame. It really is. In six months, if there, if there's two places you think is okay, you're gonna go for more? What are you gonna do to this town, for Christ's sake? I can't believe this. We should fire everybody. This is ridiculous. It really, really is. But you're gonna do it. You can, you won't allow another bar, but you're gonna allow drug shops. I can't, I can't believe it. It's just totally, I just can't believe it. So thank God for elections. That's all I got to say for the next time we have elections for this whole committee. And people. So I've answered that question already. So in six months, we have this to look forward to all over again. You know, it's getting to the point where that, if I was, I wished I was a winner, I'd be out of here yesterday. But I'm not. But I'm not gonna stop, but I'm not spending the rest of my life in a town I grew up in since nineteen fifty-five. I'm an old Riverbanger, and I'm gonna, adios. This is ridiculous. Oakdale's not this bad. They got one shop, and they had it for a while, and we've already passed them. I was gonna ask you something a while ago, and I thought I covered it, and I didn't. I noticed that for the last year, with this council shop that's proposed on Third Street, which has just passed, I've noticed that they've been working on that for a year. You guys known about this way back when you were saying, we're not gonna allow anything like that in Riverbank, you know? It's already bought and paid for then. I'll never believe you any of it again. And I'm totally shocked and disappointed in this whole council and in the mayor. And what I just said is true. I can't wait till election time comes. I won't be running. I spent thirty-nine and a half years, most of my life, in Teamsters Union. I know how things should be ran. I know what you do to bring things where they should be. You people don't. You're running just like a carnival. You've made so many mistakes, like the ladies explained, in, in, in the, what do you call it? The appeal. That right there, a long shot, cost you two more months. And I, I see what happens to Mayor, just came here and left, and I wouldn't want no part of that. Not for four hundred fifty dollars a month. I understand you folks make a hundred and forty a month. Why would you want that? Why would you even do that? Anyway, thank you.
Scott McRitchie, Riverbank. I'm pleased to see that at least we're thinking about having a moratorium. I would hate to see all four of them come in at one time. As Ms. Gammon said, maybe it should be longer. There's just a lot of things that we don't know, that no one knows, that are specific to our community. So I would support at least a six month and, and further look, maybe longer. Possibly at the end of the six month, you would do it again if there's certain questions that haven't been answered, or certain problems that haven't been encountered. So I do applaud you for at least putting a moratorium on this long so that you can get a start and see what happens with the two before any more put in. Thank you.
Anyone else for a public comment?
My name is Letizia Hidalgo. I've been a resident here of Riverbank for over thirty years. I think you're losing the trust of the public by even considering four of these type of businesses here in this location. It's just, we're so small, and apparently it doesn't matter what we say or what the community thinks. But really, think about the impact that you're having here on your community. Do you really care for the people that live here? Do you care for your children, for the students that you teach? I mean, what message are you sending here? Consider at least, like it was commented, at least a year to, to learn from the studies that are being conducted, and to see the mistakes that are being made. And, you know, don't be reactive after the fact where all these states are having issues, and they don't know what to do and, and how to fix the error that they've made. You need to be proactive and think of things right now, and consider everything. Look at the studies. Take your time. Look at, to see how it's affecting the finances, how it's affecting crime, the neighborhoods, property values, all that. Take everything into consideration. Six months won't give you everything. The studies are timely and, and, you know, are currently in, in process for other states. This is new to California. As of this year in January, we're barely in February. So really, I mean, what do you have to, to look as prior experience at this time? You don't have anything for here in California. You only have what has been done in other states. So take your time and look at that. Don't lose your whole trust from the city. Don't let your city lose hope. You know, if you don't have hope, what do you have? You don't have anything. You know, there's always the black market, and I'm sure the officer in the back, if he could say something, he would agree that the black market will always be there, and people will obtain these products in any way that they feel that they need to. It doesn't matter. It's the people who have the income that will go to the high-end retail. And that's not everybody here in this community. We're a working class, and, you know, people don't always have the means to purchase these high-end products. So who are you really, who are you really providing the services to? You know, not everybody's able to come to these meetings. We are working class. People have different responsibilities at home, at their schools, churches, whatever their family situation is. People aren't always able to be here. At least have the courtesy to include this information about what the city is considering in the water bill. You send out notices about the parade, the hayride, whatever is going on with the city. But what really matters isn't being communicated to your people here in the city. So please, really, if you wanna know what people think, you want people to be informed, include the information, at least with the utility bill.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Okay, we'll bring it back to the city council. Are there any comments, questions, or motion?
I have some comments. In the last meeting, I voted no on bringing the second cannabis in, based on my concern that we're moving too fast. After the comments tonight, I agree that it should be, we should make this a year moratorium, basically because the businesses haven't opened yet. It's gonna be another month or two, maybe, before they open. That leaves only four months of business for us to evaluate. It'd be nice to see, excuse me, to see it also go through a couple of seasons where we have school open and school closed. So I'd like to amend this to say one year, if the rest of the council agrees. Thank you.
It says six months, and we can redo this again in six months.
Just like to make a comment, this is a pilot program. And as Councilmember Jones Cruz just said, we can renew it for another six months if we so choose to do that. Likewise, I'd just like to make some comments to the general public. We've sat up here, and you've accused us of several things. I'll put my reputation against anybody out in our audience for the things that I've done and I believe in. Just because we don't agree with you doesn't mean that we're absolutely wrong. We haven't heard from a majority by a long shot. It's the same people that we're hearing from. And I lived in, I live right in the district down the street. I've talked to five people that were concerned enough to call me. So you have to look at that this process represents not just a few people, but everyone. And we've thought this out very clearly, and we're sticking with our guns because we think in the long run, it's the best thing that we can do. You're not gonna get rid of the marijuana. It's here. If the dispensaries are not here, the marijuana will still be here. I want to clarify it, because some of you have made comments that we can't have it in our city. You can't stop that. The state of California has already legalized it. It's here. We're looking for the best ways that we can deal with it. And I wanted to say, it's been a pleasure working with these people up here at the, on this council, because they are educated, they think hard about things, and we care a lot about the children. Some of us have been in the profession with children. And you need to remember that. We're doing the best that we can. Are we perfect? No. But it's just like, we're not bad because we don't agree with you. And I really get tired of being accused of that from a minority. I haven't heard a majority yet. Get the majority, then come and see me. Thank you.
Mayor O'Brien, do you have a comment? Mayor O'Brien?
I had it on mute. Let me, let me redo that. I heard from the Sanders Falls County residents claiming to be a resident of Riverbank, and her comments, but Mr. Moore went in and out. Can you give me the gist of what he said?
Mayor, I think that if you wanna hear that, we probably need to have him come back and give his comment again.
No, no, that's fine. That's fine. I got some of it, what was going on. I believe he accused me of doing something. But I'll tell you what, I agree with Councilmember Campbell. However, I have spoken to many more people, or residents of Riverbank, who are in favor of a dispensary, at least on a trial basis, and going forward with it. Nextdoor.com bullies anybody who has a comment contrary to those who don't want to see it. And it's ugly. And it's ugly throughout. So I'm not gonna be here and standing up getting ugly. What I will do is that although we are putting a moratorium on a, additional dispensaries for the next six months, as we progress... as we progress, we may want to extend that without coming back to council. That's a minimum of six months. And at the same time, if things go south at any one of the dispensaries, we could pull the plug. And I hope people understand that. I agree with you, Councilmember Campbell. Um, I don't agree that we should put a moratorium on all of it for, uh, any period of time. I believe that we just take a look at it as it progresses. This is new territory, but it's not new territory for many other parts of the country. It's new territory for us, but you know, it's a new territory trying to eliminate the pushers. People say, "What are we trying to tell our kids?" We're not going to, we're not trying to tell them to go to the pushers. We want them not to use it at all. And there is no way a dispensary will cater to anyone under the age of twenty-one for fear of losing their inventory and their investment and going to jail. So, um, I agree that we do need to go for a moratorium, um, just to see how it plays out and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I also agree that, uh, we should, uh, I'm in agreement with having, uh, the opportunity to analyze these businesses and see how things go. So I really appreciate seeing that we are considering the six-month moratorium. And as it has already been stated, that, um, we can renew our six months. We can pull the plug if we need to. We can, um, stop all activity if they're not meeting up to our, uh, development agreement and then we can move forward. So, um, like I said, I, I'm glad to see that we have item six point one. So if there's no other comments?
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez, perhaps one, uh, I don't think it's explicitly stated in the resolution, but we can add it. Perhaps a, kind of a compromise here between what Councilmember Fosse has said and, and some of the other members. Perhaps we add a trigger and at five months, um, we will bring an item back so that council's making a decision about extending that moratorium for another six months if necessary, uh, so that that timeframe doesn't lapse and all of a sudden you have applications again. We could easily add that in.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I think that's what we did before when we had more terms for the, um, ten-two shops.
Shall we entertain a motion?
I just had a comment before we do, if you don't mind. Um, I, I'm leaving tonight with a really heavy heart and, and, uh, Councilmember Campbell, thank you for saying what you did. I don't think it's all right to bully people for having difference of opinions. Um, this is a pretty tough job sitting up here. And to have people sitting there bullying and, and, and questioning my, my, my person is very offensive. Um, I feel very comfortable with my vote up here. I feel like I've educated myself and, um, and I applaud everyone else up here that spent a lot of time, energy, and effort on this. And, um, again, I just refuse to be bullied by a few. And I find it offensive when other people have difference of opinion. Um, I completely respect each and every one of you that got up there and spoke. I've never said anything bad about you, about your moral character or your values or your thoughts. And I expect the same respect from, that I give you, each and every one of you, that you give me and every other council member up here. It's really offensive. And with that, I would like to make a motion to accept item six point one for a moratorium of six months with the added part in that we will trigger it, trigger it thirty days before the six months so we don't have any more applications if we so choose.
I second.
We have a first and a second to approve item six point one. Roll call, please.
First motion made by Jones Cruz, second by Councilmember Fosse. Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item six point two, facility use fee review for nonprofit groups.
Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor. So, uh, this item is, I'm going to pass it to Sue to kind of go through the work she's done. But just to kind of give folks a, a background, um, the Kiwanis Club in November, uh, made a request for council to waive some rental fees for a, uh, Super Bowl event. I think that they were going to do a fundraiser. And what, what they may not have known and what a lot of folks don't know is that the City Council some time ago went through a very lengthy process with staff on developing this, it's fairly complicated policy about which nonprofit groups have a grandfather status and which get reduced fees. And, uh, trying to really do the best we can to be as equitable as possible. So at that meeting, council sort of had the discussion. Since that time, the Kiwanis Club has, um, rescinded that request. They're going to go another direction. But council mentioned at the time, we'd really like to get an idea about how is the po- policy working and what is the cost to the city for, for the use of these services? And so Sue's going to kind of step you through that. She did a lot of work and comparative work with other communities to figure out sort of where we're at.
Hey, Vice Mayor and members of the council. So as Sean mentioned, uh, it's kind of a catch-22 because we sincerely care about the nonprofits and we want to make sure that, uh, we have facilities for them. But we also have that, uh, need to be able to maintain our facilities and replace the tables and chairs and, and improve, you know, our, our facilities as part of our strategic plan states. Um, so I did look at, as, as council requested, I did look at, um, the cost analysis. I looked at indirect and direct, uh, costs and kind of got a feel of where we are and I'll present that. In my, uh, staff report, I had a lot of attachments that went in detail with, um, the, which nonprofits are grandfathered in, who's paying what, and what other facilities are doing, other cities are doing. Um, so I kind of condensed it for this, um, PowerPoint. But, um, as far as the cost analysis for the two facilities we're really talking about, predominantly the community center because that's our large facility. Um, the direct costs, which are things such as the site monitor, the custodial, supplies, part-time custodial, uh, and these are per event, is about five hundred and fifty dollars. And the indirect costs, um, which is more of the overhead, uh, time spent, uh, by the clerks, recreation staff, the utility portion, um, depreciation and the set aside that we, we have, um, uh, kind of put into the equation for repairs. Um, that, that comes to about eleven hundred and five dollars. So the total cost, if we were going to try to include the indirect and direct, would be, uh, sixteen fifty-five. And what our full rental fee is, is sixteen hundred dollars. So we're pretty close on that. Um, and the Scout Hall kind of goes along the same lines but at a lesser cost. That's a small facility. So we look at the market value as well, is what would people typically rent a building for? And the Scout Hall is, is small, so we can't really recoup our costs as much as we could in a larger facility. So the current fee structure for facility use that we have is for a commercial or a non-resident, they would pay the full fee, which is sixteen hundred dollars, close to what our, our analysis showed. The Riverbank residents have a twenty percent discount. They pay thirteen hundred. A nonprofit, which is the grandfathered-in groups, pay a hundred dollars. And that's when we said they were just going to kind of cover custodial. And these were predominantly the events that have been here for years. That would be the Women's Club Luncheon, that would be, um, the Omelet Breakfast for the Historical Society. Some of those that have been around for a long time. And I think that's how we came up with that list back in two thousand and fourteen. Um, and then back in two thousand and fourteen, we also, um, and I think we increased it since then, we said, okay, probably what the nonprofit groups should pay from this point forward is five hundred dollars. And that's pretty close to what the cost analysis shows for direct expenses. And I think that's what we were trying to recoup. Um, so that would be five hundred dollars and that's still a seventy percent discount. Um, same type of fee structure, like I said, applies for the Scout Hall just at a lesser level. So the way that I kind of separate it in my mind is we have community services that happen in, say, our community center. And those are, are the things that happen mainly during the week. And that's the food program that we provide to the seniors, um, the Salvation Army services, Christian food sharing type of things, which happens at the Scout Hall, uh, Shop With The Cop, Riverbank Cares. Those, those type of things are more community services and, and what happens is those happen during the week and the full rentals that happen a lot of times on the weekends help pay for those type of things. Um, the events, the fundraisers that are the grandfathered-in type of events are a little bit different than, in my mind, than the community services. So the community services at this time, because there are so many of them that happen during the week, um, pretty much take up about fifty percent of the subsidy that comes from the general fund. So the financial impact, um, currently we have fifteen thousand per year that, uh, is the subsidy to the general fund or to the enterprise fund from the general fund. Um, really, the actual, actual subsidy needed is probably closer to twenty-five thousand. But what's happening is all the other programs that we have that go into the enterprise fund, may- maybe it's the day camps or the swim team that are making money, um, are helping to offset that subsidy because it is dumped into the same pot of money. Um, maybe that's okay, maybe that isn't. That's just something that council would need to give direction on. Um, but the main thing, I think, out of this whole conversation that we need to be aware of and that I think council was trying to, to get at was as we approve these waivers more and more, the pull from the general fund will increase. So in my research, when I looked at what other cities are doing, which we're not like other cities, we're unique. That's what makes us really nice, is we do take care of our nonprofits. We do, uh, they give about a ten percent discount and they don't allow, most of them, uh, don't allow any nonprofit, uh, discount on Fridays, Saturdays, or Sundays. They have the full rental fees coming in. Um, that's not necessarily something we wanted to do, but, um, just looking around, I think the, the best thing that I might suggest is just that at some point, we say, what is our cap on subsidy? You know, how much do we want on an annual basis, it, do we want to subsidize from the general fund? And maybe that makes it easier because I know it's a tough decision when we have to decide what waivers to grant and which ones not to grant. But at the end of the year, we would be asking for more, more money if we're not real careful on how many we do approve, knowing that we're already providing so many community services during the week that we're looking to supplement from the full rentals. Hopefully that makes sense. So basically, you know, hopefully that answered, you know, I did come up, I did a, a real good research on finding out. We are, I feel comfortable that we're where we should be, um, especially with the condition of our facilities. We are lower than our surrounding cities in our rental costs. Um, that's a good thing. We're renting our facility a lot and we are hopefully maybe going to be able to renovate it with some of the grant funds that we, um, will be getting hopefully soon. Um, and if not, we have to look closer at other ways to maintain the building. But is there any questions? Hopefully that answered what everybody was looking for.
Thank you. I don't have a question, just a comment. Um, I guess it's a question too. So at this point in time, I'm glad to see that you say that, um, pretty much that you kind of think that, uh, it's taking care of its, the, the, the other classes and so forth and contracts are pretty much taking care of the expenses somewhat, right?
Somewhat, correct.
Okay, so, um, do you think it's really working right now? Or do we really need to look at making some changes?
I think it's working. I think that the five hundred dollar for service clubs or nonprofit, whatever we want to call it, uh, from this point on is probably important unless there's some, some reason we want to waive something and that would be up to council. But I think that we've established the fees. And I think we probably are going to come back in another year or two and, and ask for a little bit of an increase in fees. But I think that, that the five hundred dollars is probably reasonable for a nonprofit to work into their whole fundraising, um, and then keeping with the community services too, which are really important, um, during the week, you know, the food program and all of those things, the Salvation Army, Christian food sharing and all of those. We know those are very important to the community as well as the events. I think we have a good balance at this point. Um, and I think we're, we're keeping our fees down, but we're also, um, we're also, I think, where we need to be, uh, as long as we have the supplement. And all, and as long as the general fund is able to provide that subsidy on an annual basis. That's, that's also the question is, how long can we do that? And if it increases, can we, can we still supply that?
Vice Mayor, if I could just add two other things. Is we've ta- we've talked about this a lot over about the last month because it's a very touchy issue. You know, people, everybody that's doing one of these kinds of events is really doing something nice for the community. And so we want to try to help them get there. Um, and so the balance, like Sue keeps talking about, is you don't want it to fall too far one way because then you run into disrepair and other issues. But what we generally feel is the policy really works. It, with a few outliers here and there, it, it generally really works and works the way you intended it to work. The other component I would just encourage council to think about is, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars sounds like a lot of money, but in the scope of your total general fund, it's not. Uh, it's a significant amount, but it goes towards that very specific surface, uh, service. So, so long as we're going into that decision eyes wide open, uh, you know, I don't think there's any policy ramifications of it. I just want you to think about it in total terms versus, you know, for me or you, twenty-five thousand dollars is a lot of money. But in the scope of a general fund, it maybe isn't quite as much.
I, um, I thank you, Sue, for bringing that all back to us. I just remember that we spent a lot of time at, it was right when I first came on council. I just remember we agonized over it because, again, we were dealing with that balance. These are nonprofit agencies, but we need to cover the budget. You know, we're kind of in some financial, um, you know, strain. And we wanted to make sure that we were able to meet all of our, um, um, criteria. And so I just remember really struggling with coming up with it. It's really hard to, you know, sit up here and have the nonprofits, you know, request us and, and we're going, no. You know, but in reality, we spent a lot of time and I think we came up with something that was really good. I really liked seeing in your report the seventy percent and the ninety percent discount on those. I came to think it brought to light and really was a visual for me to see that the nonprofits that were ga- that were grandfathered in were receiving a ninety percent discount. And then the, um, nonprofits that were requesting this were receiving a seventy percent discount on the fee. Um, that's, that's a huge discount on it. And I mean, you set the fees so that we can cover all the expenses that we need to. Um, I feel really comfortable with the situation that we're in right now and, and the way it is. Um, I feel that we should move forward and kind of keep it like it is. And maybe like you suggested, coming back, um, and, and looking at those fees because things do, um, increase and we might need to adjust those in the future. But I'm personally on this end, just confident and, and comfortable with where things are at.
I agree totally with what Councilmember, uh, Jones Cruz just said.
Councilmember Fosse, any comment? You're good? Okay. Mayor O'Brien, any comment?
Um, I'm in agreement. Uh, I was one probably pushed the hardest to try to get, uh, some new information. And, uh, Sue, you did a great job. Uh, you reaffirm that our last decision was great and, uh, we'll continue in the same vein, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
This item is open for a public comment. Seeing no further comment from the public, uh, is there anyone who would like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we accept item six point two as so-stated.
I second.
We have a first and a second for item six point two. Roll call, please.
First motion made by Councilmember Campbell, second by Fosse. Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item six point three, a resolution approving the application for the Land and Water Conservation Fund for the Jacob Myers Park Trail Improvement Project.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, our Parks Direct Director will be giving this report as well.
Okay, Vice Mayor and members of the council, the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant is a really nice grant that the city has received, um, three times, twice since I've been here. Scott McRitchie and I, uh, worked hard on two of those grants. Um, and that gave us the campground at Jacob Myers Park, part of the trail, a lot of the walk-in picnic sites. Um, at Jacob Myers Park, part of the trail, a lot of the walk-in picnic sites. And the last one we wrote was two thousand and four, so we've been at a standstill because we didn't have match funding, because this particular grant is a fifty percent match. So luckily, we had Measure L funding that is eligible for a match for this grant, so we were able to write this grant again. Just to give you a little background on this funding source, is the Land and Water Conservation Fund is a federal grant that's administered at the state level, and the funds, funding sources are from outer continental shelf mineral receipts, sales of federal surplus, real property, federal recreation fees, and federal motorboat fuel taxes. And the whole idea of the funds are to increase outdoor recreational opportunities for the health and wellness of California, so it fits perfect with Jacob Myers Park, and it always has. So I'm excited that we're finally able to apply for this grant again. But this grant scope is to separate the existing trail from the access road, so as you're going past the bicentennial grove, that section of land that's always bothered me is both pedestrian and access road, now that we're sending people back to the back parking lot. So it would drop the trail down in front of the bicentennial grove. And it would also extend the trail so that the access is from the front of the park, so you could actually catch the trail from the front of the park by the rocket. It would also widen the road for easier access to the back parking lot, so that road that people are taking would be widened. And it would improve the ADA parking spaces at the turnaround area. So just kind of, I don't know how well you can see this, but, is there a pointer on here? Yeah. So, where is it? Not a very good pointer. Anyway, to the right, to the east, is the parking lot, and so you could see by the rocket, you could pick up the trail, and it'll go all the way down and connect past the bicentennial grove to the existing trail. And so we'll just separate the two, and that'll give free access to the vehicles to go all the way to the back, which will literally pave the way to all the amenities that will be expanding in the back of the park, the amphitheater, and all of those good things. So, that's kind of the plan, and the resolution clarification I wanted to make, because the template that I had put in the council packet didn't really refer to the cost, and that was the template they gave, so we know for our resolution, we need that. So, as I mentioned, this grant requires a fifty percent match, the matching funds will be paid through Measure L funding, the total project cost is one hundred and fifty-three thousand eight eighty-three, we already have the construction documents and all of that ready to go. The grant request would be seventy-six thousand nine forty-one fifty, with the fifty percent under Measure L, same amount. And the way this grant works is we pay the money out, and then the grant reimburses us. But it's a quick turnaround, we've done it before, and a lot of times, you could even spend part of it and get it reimbursed as you go, so that's kind of the details on the grant. And it's due February fifth, so it's almost ready. Any questions?
No questions from me, but I just want to make a comment. I'm so glad to see that we have something like this, because I believe in the healthy eating act of living, and this is just improving green spaces and, you know, support for the HEAL program for our city. And I'm sure that our residents really love Jacob Myers Park, and this would just be an added feature, just a little bonus on it. I'm glad to see that we are applying for it. Thank you. And I know it's hard work trying to get a grant, so thank you.
Yeah. I just want to comment on Christmas Day, after we ate our Christmas dinner, we all went to the trail. And to get to the trail, we went down by the river. So I'm glad to see there's going to be a trail to take you to the trail. But it was wonderful to be able to have the park to walk at and see some nature and just get out in the fresh air. So, thank you for proposing this.
I'd just like to make a quick comment to the public, too. Several years ago, I had the privilege of exploring different parks all the way along the Stanislaus River. And when we got to Jacob Myers Park, there were other city officials, I think Sue was along and some other people, and from the other cities, Ripon, Oakdale, Knights Ferry, when they got to Jacob Myers Park, they could not believe what we had done with that park. And they made a statement that they thought it was the best park on the river, so we have that distinction at this time in this community of having that. So I wholly support, you know, improving it even more.
You guys, this is really cool, and you guys need to be congratulated for all the work that's been done out there, the park is amazing. The opportunity to look at this grant and potentially receive this grant is huge. I know we've been listening to our financial woes for many, many years, so it's kind of cool to see that we're able to do this, and good luck, and I know it'll be great.
Hopefully, we get it.
May I comment when I have time?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, Measure L money cannot be used outside the Stanislaus County, but what I would like to do is that any funding that we have to do for Jacob Myers Park, the one hundred and thirty thousand, or whatever portion that is, we take it from our maintenance of effort, and say that this is what we consider part, because Measure L cannot go outside the county.
We hear you, and thank you for that clarification.
Sorry about that, Vice Mayor. Kathleen Kleek, who does, is our Development Services Administration Manager, said we've actually just-
Can you speak into the microphone, please, Sean?
Sorry, Mayor. Kathleen just mentioned to me that we've talked about that with Stan cog, and because the city has ownership and responsibility of the park, even though it's in another county, they will allow Measure L funds to be used.
I appreciate that, and I would agree, but the leadership said no. So we need to clarify that. I wholeheartedly believe that, since it is our property, we need to use the funds that we have available. But I'm certain that some of the leadership, which I am no longer part of, will say no.
Well, I think, even if, so maybe what we do is, we will, we will, maintenance of effort, that's a good idea, perhaps we, that's our backup plan, and we'll apply for their consideration, and if they say no, we will use the funds that would be set aside for maintenance of effort, anyway.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
This item is open for a public comment. Mayor O'Brien, is there anyone at your location wishing to make a public comment?
There is not.
So if there's no other public comment, we will bring it back to the city council. Are there any comments, other questions, or a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept item six point three for approval of the application for the grant.
I second. We have a first and a second to approve item six point three with an amendment. Roll call, please.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones Cruz, second by Fossey, Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item six point four, a resolution approving the employment agreement between City of Riverbank and Sue Fitzpatrick as Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. In June of 2015, the city council approved an adjustment of salary range for the position of Parks and Rec Director. The change was related to the pay for Parks and Rec Director at that time being significantly lower than the other executive management positions here at the city. The approval also updated provisions of severance and executive leave to be consistent with the other executive positions here at the city. At that time, council also directed that those changes be memorialized in an employment agreement. That was not completed. More recently, when I got on board, we chatted with Sue and talked about the fact that it really had never been memorialized, so we kind of set to getting her employment agreement updated. Came to close session with council more than once to discuss specifics about provisions of the contract that were not otherwise contemplated. The two that are, that are different from what existed in 2015 would be a provision that Ms. Fitzpatrick get the same healthcare benefits as provided to Launa Labor Group. This provision essentially mirrors the healthcare range between the city and members of Launa clearly moving forward, so that any changes to healthcare that is negotiated with that labor group would also apply to the Parks and Recreation Director. Similarly, the second updated provision would allow for any cost of living increases to be provided to the city's Launa group, also be applied to the Parks and Recreation Director, commonly called a me-too clause in contracts, and you see it quite a bit with employment agreements in the public sector. The approval of this agreement will complete the process that was initiated in 2015, providing clarity for both the employee and the city. The term proposed is three years from the effective date of the agreement, which will be when she signs it, which if approved, will be tomorrow. So, from a financial perspective, the core financial provisions that were adjusted in 2015 are already in place, and so therefore, the agreement does not conceive additional base pay considerations beyond those that have been approved at this time. However, there is a potential for increased fiscal impact depending on future negotiations with city labor groups. So essentially, what council will be doing is affirming what you affirmed in 2015 with a couple of additional provisions, and locking Sue up for another three years. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Also, I think she does a really great job.
Any questions?
I have to agree with you, she does do a great job.
Anything else? I think we're lucky to have you.
This is open for a public comment. First, Mayor O'Brien, is there anyone at your location wishing to make a public comment?
There is not.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make a public comment?
I worked with Sue probably since nineteen, or two thousand, two thousand, so about eighteen years.
Can you have them speak directly into the microphone? I can't hear anyone.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. My career, I started, of course, at the bottom and worked myself up to the top, and I ended up a vice president of operations for a billion-dollar company. It takes a toll on you. When I quit, my cholesterol went from ten bad guys to one good guy, to three bad guys to two good guys in three months. So there's a lot of stress that goes on. I've watched Sue, we have Parks and Recreation, but that's not what she does entirely. There's a lot of other things that she's doing. And as she went along, something would open up, or we had problems with finances, and so we had to let some people go, well, we still had other things that needed to be picked up, but no people to do it, she would do that. And it was sort of interesting, at the park, we ended up at the park, and we had a bunch of druggies, so we got a park hose, so she had to do that. We didn't realize the park hose didn't have any water, didn't have this, didn't have that, so she had to busy herself doing that. Then, of course, as it went along, the acorns falling off the oak trees, we're pounding the poor guy's mobile home that he had there, we hadn't thought about that, okay, we've got to fix that. The latest one, of course, is the item you just passed, and that is to keep the cars from running over the walkers. So it seems like in her tenure, there was always stuff, almost like the cannabis deal, things that you hadn't counted on, you didn't know about, and, well, give it to Sue, give it to Sue, give it to Sue. And her department hasn't grown that much, but she's been able to do all those things. She's, if you look at different items with any of the managers, it's almost a twenty-four seven type thing. If you have the Halloween hayride, who's out there? Sue's out there, and it's out there at eleven o'clock at night, and if somebody doesn't show up, she's the one who has to fix it, and you can say this for any of the other different things that come up. So you don't just set the clock at five o'clock and take off, you're doing this day and night. So anyhow, I know nothing about the finances here, I know nothing about the perks and all this and that, couldn't care less. You guys can figure all that stuff out. But I think that, and you do recognize the fact that she's taken on a lot of duties, and I think that she needs to be recognized for those duties. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? If not, we'll bring it back to the city council for comments, questions, or a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept item six point four.
I'll second it.
We have a first and a second for item six point four. Roll call, please.
First made by Councilmember Jones Cruz, second by Councilmember Campbell, Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, item seven point one, our staff comments and reports.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, just two quick items. One is that, and I'm sure some other council members will discuss it, but we had a nonprofit meeting last week, which went, in my opinion, really well, it was good to hear a lot of the work that the community is doing, that you don't hear about every day, and maybe ways that we can coordinate as an agency with a lot of those nonprofits. So we have two follow-up meetings that Norma and I are working on putting together. One is related to coordination of services for the homeless, and one is in relation to coordination of programs and services for utility billing assistance. So those were sort of the two hot items that were discussed at length, and so those folks that are particularly interested in those will be invited to attend, and hopefully, we can come out with a better program at the end of the day. The second item I want to mention just very briefly, and I think next meeting, we may have a little bit more detail, but the Catholic Church has been engaged with us for nearly a year, I think, on a crosswalk project on calendar and Santa Fe, I think. And it started off, I just want to take two minutes, it started off with a desire and a need from the church. Caltrans does not look at those projects from a desire perspective, they look at it from a data perspective, period, and a liability perspective. So we knew early on, when we had responded to Caltrans, that we really think that there should be a crosswalk around here, that they were probably going to tell us that we don't have the sufficient numbers to get crosswalks there. And so they actually did some analysis, and sure enough, that's pretty much what they told us. And then over the course of about four to six months, myself and Kathleen, and a couple of council members up here, and the priest, and Scott, and a number of other folks from the church, sort of just kept meeting, and we didn't stop. And then we went to Stockton, to the District Ten offices, and started to bug them about it, and letters, and calls, and getting our other elected people involved. And eventually, we got to this place where the District Ten Director met with us, and we made some headway. So, I'm very happy to say that, in general, Caltrans has kind of looked at the general concept and said, well, look, if you do some of these things, we could probably be supportive of a crosswalk at that location. Just today, Kathleen was meeting with our city engineer, and we set him loose on the design, the total street design, and it's, we'll have some more specific detail on it in the future, but it's going to cost about a hundred thousand dollars, and we're going to pay for it, it's on our Measure L project list, and we're going to have a pretty specific timeline from the design engineers of when that's going to go to Caltrans, so there'll be real deliverables. But the good news is, is you're going to start to see folks out there measuring and doing the survey work they need to do, and we probably wouldn't have gotten there if it just hadn't been the persistence of the church and a couple council members have been involved in it. So I just wanted to pass that along, because it's good news. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fossey?
Yes, I wanted to mention, over the last couple weeks, I've had two instances where I've seen situations that have happened, and I'm astonished that nobody has called. One of them was across the street from Crossroads, somebody dumped not just the couch, not just a sink, but a whole garage. There was a lot of trash there, and this is not something that happens in five minutes. It's something that happens over a period of time, and I want to encourage our citizens, when you see something like that, please call, please call nine-one-one, call your local sheriff, go and do, just call somebody. The other instance was, I got notified through Facebook about some damage done to one of our parks. Again, when you see damage done to our parks, please call nine-one-one if you're there and you see it happening, take pictures if you can, please don't approach people. Also, on Monday morning, just call Parks and Rec and let them know, because unfortunately, they don't have the staff to go out and see every- and see every day what has been damaged or tagged or whatever. But please, I encourage everybody to take the time to notify somebody. If you didn't see it happen, but you want to report it, I'm on Facebook. Just send me a picture on Facebook and Sean hears from me all the time. But again, I encourage you, if you see people dumping, please call nine one one. It's a disgrace to the community. It's not right. I'd love to go through that trash pile and find who the owner was and go to their house and dump it on their lawn. But we need to watch out for our community because it may not have been crossroad. It could have been your front yard or your street. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones Cruz?
I think I'm good for this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
I'd just like to build a little bit on what Councilmember Fossey said. We do have a small homeless population in our community, and we try to do things with that. And like she was saying, notice from the public about things needs to be given to the city authorities so that things can be done. This applies to the homeless also. I was down at Hutchinson Park just the other day, walking my dog. And I looked over the edge of the fence there along the river, and it looked like a couple of homeless camps down there. So I mentioned it to our city manager. I don't know whether they were abandoned or new camps. But we really need to work together for several reasons. One, it's not really safe for them to be doing things where they're doing it like that, along the river like that. Weather's not that great sometimes, plus also, they get in incidents with other homeless people. So just as Councilmember Fossey said, I would encourage you, if you see someone homeless curled up in the bushes somewhere back there behind the telephone center off of Oakdale Road, because I've heard comments about that, you know, let the authorities know so we can get them help so that nothing happens to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor O'Brien? Mayor O'Brien, do you have any comments?
Okay, can you hear me now?
There you go.
Yes. Go ahead for your comments.
All right. I want to caution about nine one one. If you get the county nine one one and they don't always respond. I saw an individual smoking marijuana and selling marijuana in a grocery store on Patterson just before Oakdale. You may guess where it was. And they called nine one one and the dispatch said, it's legal now. We're not going to respond. The City of Riverbank will respond. If other agencies do not, we will respond. So be careful about interacting with nine one one. They're not as responsive as you may think. I want to thank everyone who went to the nonprofit meeting. I think it was very informative. And I'm very proud of a lot of the efforts everyone is doing. I just want to say that we're continuing to move on like we haven't done before. I want to commend those who spoke tonight, even though there is contention between some of the speakers and the refipian. But I want you, want them all to remember that I have spoken to many more people outside who agree than I have heard in front of us. And not that I'm going, it's a poll per se, it's what we believe is best for the city. And I believe the City Council has done a remarkable job in weighing in what is right for the city and how to proceed. I want to remind everyone, on the fifteenth of February, we have the Utility Billing Action Group, as the city manager has mentioned, but I'm calling it the U-Bag. I believe that we can do something very positive with the billing with a number of people who are involved in providing billing assistance. And I believe, I haven't checked up on this, but I believe the city is being proactive and getting together information where we all can share on the fifteenth. A date not to miss is the twenty-second of February, which is the state of the city. And I know there's a lot of people who think there is a different state of the city, and they're welcome to participate in that event. And follow on, on the fifteenth of March, I believe the city, and I couldn't hear you, city manager. I don't think you spoke directly into the microphone. But on the fifteenth of March, we have a meeting concerning the homeless and what we can do for those who are not quite homeless, such as families that are living from one house to another, and maybe we can come up with some resolution. I believe that would be best for the interest of the City of Riverbank. Other than that, I think the acting mayor did a superb job. Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven point three, I just want to mention that I represented the Central Valley on the League of California Cities Community Policy Committee meeting. And this committee reviews legislation that affects the quality of life. Our work plan for 2018 consists of looking at legislation for the homeless, children, which would include foster care, parks, and after-school programs, affordable housing, and libraries. And I also want to thank the public for their comments. We do hear you. It is difficult for us to make decisions. And like I said, well, like I have said in the past, is that when we make a decision, it has to, we have to make sure that it affects the whole city, not just special interests. So I just want to thank you for coming out, and we look forward to having you being involved in other city meetings, city council meetings. Okay, item eight point one, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision B of Government Code five four nine five six point nine, three potential cases. Item eight point two, public employment pursuant to Government Code five four nine five seven, B one, title, Public Works Director. Mayor O'Brien, is there anyone at your location wishing to make a public comment?
There is not.
Thank you. Do we have anyone from the audience wishing to make a public comment on any of our closed items?
Report from closed session, item 9.1. Report from closed session, item 8.1. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. Three potential cases. Direction has been given to staff. Item 9.2. Report from closed session, item 8.2. Public employment, title, public works director. Direction has been provided to staff. Our next city, regular city council meeting will be on Tuesday, February 13th at 6:00 p.m. Having no further business, we are now adjourned. Thank you everyone.
Thank you. Good job.